Seven o'clock, we'll call the meeting to order.
Bill's character.
Karen, can you please take the role?
Sure. Commissioner Young?
Here.
Commissioner Keen? Commissioner Black? Commissioner Brink?
Here.
Commissioner Miller?
Here.
Commissioner Batty?
Here.
And President Linness?
Present. We have a court. Next on the agenda is to the Pledge of Allegiance. We ask those that are able to join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation united, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Next is to approve the agenda. Is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to the commissioners with a motion to remove line item number eight, the MU3 zoning discussion item, from the agenda to a later date when there's more members available to take part in the discussion.
Is there a second?
All second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there discussion? Ms. Yan?
Is this something you'd like to discuss in an introductory manner tonight or just not discuss it at all?
I think based on discussion, we'd like to see, have more members because there's a lot of items that have to be discussed as part of this. And instead of having to rediscuss it twice when there's more members available, we'd like to just move it to a later date.
Thank you.
It was also a staff recommendation. Any other discussion? All those in favor, sign by saying aye. Aye. No? Motion carries. Item number five, approve planning commission meeting minutes from December 11th. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would move to you approve the planning commission meeting minutes from December 11th, 2019.
Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there discussion? All those in favor, sign by by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. No? Motion carries. I'm sorry, was there any abstentions on that? No? We had all five. Item number six, interim use permit for agricultural use in B2, MXR3, and MXR1 zoning districts. We'll have a public hearing for this and then consider an interim use permit application. Donovan, do you want to kick us off first? And then for those in the audience or those that have applied for the permit, we'll give you an opportunity after staff presents to us and we have any questions answered directly from them. And then we'll ask you to come up to the podium. We'll hold the public hearing after that. Donovan?
Yes, sir. Commissioner and planning commission, I'd like to present the interim use permit application from Mark Smith, who's present with us this evening, to conduct agricultural activities, agricultural uses as interim use in the B2, MXR, and MXR1 zoning district areas of his parcel that's located basically behind Menards, south of Broadway. It's a total of eight PIDs seen here on your screen. And it's approximately 142 acres. And Mr. Smith had this interim use permit for these areas here, these parcels that was approved in 2012 and expired in the last day of 2019. And so Mr. Smith seeks now to extend that. And the actual application does include the southern parcel, unlike the 2012 application. The, as mentioned, there are three zoning districts. Here the B2 in red, MXR3 here, which is the mixed residential, and then the MXR1 here. And what he's been doing is basically cultivation, is it?
Corn and wheat.
Corn and wheat, just basically pasture crops. And there's about 70 acres or so of upland. So there's extensive wetlands within the property. And in fact, the 2012 interim use permit that's in your packet does indicate some of the conditions that involve buffering and keeping some distance from those wetland areas. And what is different about this application, currently, the way that I'm presenting it is that in the 2012 interim use permit, they presented as a findings of fact that the use is allowed as interim use in the respective zoning district at the discretion of the city council. Based on the guidance of the current city attorney, we now actually add these uses into the zoning code if recommended and approved by city council so that it's actually listed. And so it's a little bit different, and that's why we have the actual, the zoning text amendment is also accompanying this application. And of course, they go together. And obviously, when it comes down to actual adoption, the zoning text amendment, I mean, the interim use permit is predicated upon the adoption of the zoning text amendment as well. And what is different also is that this time, Mr. Smith actually has applied to expand the agriculture use into this MXR1, in this southernmost parcel of the property. And it's a staff recommendation not to allow this since the MXR1 zone is pretty, it's fairly common throughout the city. And I wouldn't want to put it in a situation where we have more of this interim type use in these ag zones that are essentially owned, zoned for residential and to be part of the city's growth in the future. And so the staff recommendation is to extend the interim use permit for the properties or zone B2 Highway Business and MXR3 with eight conditions, which are the eight conditions that are from the 2012 IUP, with the one change being that the expiration date is December 31st, 2029. And at this time, I'd like to take any questions from the planning commission.
So why the change from, you know, why, what's, I'm trying to understand why this adding, adding it in as actual uses in the zoning text amendment. I'm just curious what about this has kind of initiated that change from our standpoint? Because that isn't anything he's asked for, is it?
No, he has asked for it.
Well, no, I understand he's asked for the right to do this, but the whole zoning text amendment, why aren't we just doing it the same way we did it before? I mean, I'm just curious what generated the change in the way we're looking at it legally?
Oh, it's, I think it's something of a legal tidiness the city attorney prefers. And I'm, you know, I don't see an issue with it.
Okay, I mean, that's fine. I'm not vehemently against, and I was just curious why well enough wasn't good enough, you know?
Yeah.
Okay. Question again?
So this is not the comp plan that we have submitted to the Met Council. This is not our, I'll call it the new comp plan, correct?
This is the current zoning district, districts, the zoning map.
In the new comp plan that we submitted to the Met Council, which has not been finally approved by our council?
The comp plan has, the 2040 comp plan has not been approved by council, yes.
Okay. And this is not the 2040 comp plan land uses?
Correct.
Okay. The zoning code, you said that this is, since 2012, when this was previously approved, there was a change in the zoning code, and when was that?
No, no, no. I'm saying that it's a city's practice now, city staff recommendation to include, actually list the interim use, if I can get into, you know, within the zoning code, rather than just have it, and it's just kind of the, I can show you, you know, for instance, in the Highway Business, there's this kind of a catch-all phrase in the interim uses, uses as determined by the planning commission and city council.
Mm-hmm.
And that's what they use, and you can see referenced in that, the 2012 interim use permit. Now, the, you know, the recommendation of city attorney is that we actually list that as agriculture uses within there. And perhaps, I think one thing I neglected to say is that, you know, as part of Mr. Smith's application, he, you know, this is consistent with the 2012, is that he's applying for this so he can continue his agricultural activities there until development, you know, conditions are favorable. Because he is a home builder. I mean, he's not a farmer. He might look like a farmer. Yeah, sometimes. But, and so that's, but it's within the city zoning code that interim uses can be allowed, you know, prior to development or, you know, in these specific cases.
Couple of your proposed conditions are ag crops only. How do you currently define ag crops?
The way the zoning district does, which does not include livestock. Also, there's a condition there that no agricultural buildings are allowed. I'll show you. So agricultural use, land whose use is devoted to the production of horticulture and nursery stock, fruits of all kinds, vegetables, forage, grains, bees, and apiary products, and raising domestic farm animals. However, but this, you know, this condition is allow the farming of agricultural crops only, so we exclude that domestic farm animal use.
I didn't see the definition of ag crops in there, and so we do have the agricultural use definition, which does include critters. So if he, during the 10 years, wanted to fence it and pasture something there, that would not be allowed? Even though our ag use definition, which we do have in the code, would allow those things?
But we could define it more clearly for ag crops. You know, I'm comfortable with that, but, you know, we could more clearly define it.
Okay. Your second condition is no open storage of equipment. Would that include, for instance, a combine overnight?
I wouldn't count that as storage if it was simply there during a work season, work time, I should say.
Okay. Because it's not unusual to, you know, park a tractor there and have a, after you've planted and you want to cultivate a month later, leave your tractor there instead of dragging it back to wherever, so for short periods of time. And then I would like more information from the applicant later regarding the buffers that are required and from you on the reported heavy equipment and land raising that was done. And where that is within the rules and the enforcement action.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Thank you.
Other questions of staff? We'll invite the applicant. If you have anything to say, we'll just ask you to come up to the podium. If you don't, then it's fine, too.
Can you answer questions? It's just questions of my presentation.
Okay.
Are there questions of the applicant from commissioners?
So what kind of crops, I mean, is it just regular beans?
I am going to ask you to come up to the podium to answer, so those watching on television can hear you, though.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners. Appreciate you having me here. To answer the question on the crops, we've been just doing basically the wheat, soybeans, or corn. You kind of alternate, otherwise you replenish the soils, which you probably, it sounds like you are aware of. So it's whatever, the guy, I don't do the farming. We have been leasing out the land to a farmer that's been just doing the change of whatever he feels is the best crop that's for the soil, based on what was done the previous year.
In your lease agreement with the farmer, are you requiring them to maintain the buffers around the wetlands?
Yes.
And how are you enforcing that, sir?
I just tell them to do it. They've been good at that stuff. I mean, they've been staying away from that. So they have been, if anything, they've gone beyond the buffers, and that's been more of the problem. If you keep, you know, the reason we farm this, basically, I'm not making any money off it, it's more just to keep the buckthorn from growing and all the weeds from growing so it's maintainable. You know, 12 years ago or 15 years ago at the site, we had poplars and everything that had overgrown the site, and it was, it had been farmed before, and then it got neglected, and it was just, the only way to keep it under control is to farm it. So, and what happens, it's been wetter, and there was garbage out there, so the farmer kept, people dump stuff out there notoriously, so these buffers get bigger, not because I want them to be, but because either I have to be out there removing stuff so I can keep farming those areas, or the areas, the buffers get bigger. So he knows, he's aware of the rules. He farms at other places in Forest Lake and knows the rules, so.
And did you have some earthmoving equipment out there?
Yes.
And could you talk to me about what you were doing, please, and where you're at with the conservation district?
Yeah, two things out there, I guess, it's a longer story than that, but we've been having people dumping garbage like crazy. And as I mentioned, the farmer complained that they were running over stuff or hitting construction debris. And so we went out there, we actually pulled four dumpster loads of construction tin, concrete blocks, shingles out of areas that were on the edge of the wetlands, or just dumping them in there. So four dumpsters, we pushed dirt back into that. And as far as I'm with Jay Riggs, he's been sent a letter. We actually have permission from the city of Forest Lake from 1997, which I sent a copy to, that we can actually fill that area, and that it's an accidental, or I don't know if that's the right word, but I could give you the sheets for that. But it's an incidental wetland based on when they took the dirt out of there for my building, 35 and the overpass on 8. So they, we had permission from the city. We hadn't filled it in, which we probably should have done immediately after that was done, but we kept, it was dry enough, so we never had issues with it. And then as the water started to back up, because basically because of the garbage being dumped there, and it's been wetter, it's been growing. And so we find, so we got to fix this problem, so. But Jay was comfortable, the gentleman from Washington County soils, with that letter. I know the spring, or sometime this winter, we're still going to go out there and take a look when it's not so cold, and I think that'll resolve the issue. He felt comfortable with that. We also, I guess one thing, too, there was a ditch out, the ditch that runs along Lyons, and it looked like someone had filled in that ditch a little bit in the middle part of it, and we didn't know if it was erosion, though part of me thinks, and I don't want pointing fingers, but I'm thinking someone from the other side of the road may have done that to help build up the backwater into their property so they could water their trees. So we went out there and kept the elevation where it was supposed to be. We kind of worked backwards, and so it was a flatter ditch, or there was a hump in the center that was holding back about a foot and a half of water that should have been sitting back on that pond, and that was flowing, like I said, back into the culvert that went underneath Lyons and into someone else's property on the west side of Lyons Street.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Next, we'll open up the public hearing. So once we open up the public hearing, if anyone in here, present, wishes to state anything of interest on this item, we'd ask they come up to the podium, and we'll do our best we can at listening. Public hearing is open. Is there anyone that would like to speak? It appears that there's no one that wants to speak for the public hearing, so we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for consideration of a decision.
Mr. Chairman, this section to the triangular shape, second section to the south there that's zoned differently, is it, is the reason that staff is not recommending that that be included in this, is that, is it because of this process, that we'd have to basically go through the same process? Or is it just that what the zoning of that property actually is?
It's really the zoning. The, you know, I believe that this, you know, Mr. Smith's use of the land, even though it's within this residential and commercial zoning districts, it's really kind of isolated, you know, back from Broadway. I mean, probably most residents aren't really aware it's there. You can kind of look out that direction, you can see wetlands. So it's pretty isolated, and it's really specific to this property. Once the, you switch that to the MXR1 zoning, you know, which comprises about 16% of the city, and suddenly, it's no longer an isolated situation. And there's many cases throughout, especially in the southwest, you know, portion of the city. I'll pull up the zoning map here. You can see the MXR1 zoning district by the tan color. Currently, there are many places where farming is a nonconforming use for these areas. But to me, that seems to open up a whole series of other issues, potentially other applications where really the, you know, the intent is to have, you know, development follow-through there and not have interim use permit that might hinder that, you know, that development.
So how would an interim use permit hinder development?
That doesn't make sense.
I don't, I don't understand that. I mean, he can, he can end his agricultural activities anytime he's ready to develop the property and go ahead. I'm, I'm not trying to be difficult here, I'm just trying to understand the thinking behind this. It just seems to me, you know, because of my work, I understand this buckthorn issue. Most people have no idea that it's a problem, and it, you know, pretty much have to overtake us like Kudzu has in the southern part of this country before we're going to do something about it, you know? Because it's green, and it doesn't matter that it's invasive and it's not, you know, it's not native to Minnesota, but it's taken over.
There are a lot of us that buckthorn bust.
What's that?
There are a lot of us that buckthorn bust.
But I just, you know, if, you know, if tilling that land or, you know, giving it agricultural use would keep it, you know, keep that from hap, you know, keep buckthorn from taking over or suckers, you know, brush, that sort of thing, I guess I'm not, I'm not understanding why that would be a detriment. It just seems like it would be better to be able to keep the land clear of, if it's going to be developed land, clear of having this, you know, unwanted stuff grow on it. And tilling the land is one way to do that.
No, I understand that perspective. I look at it more globally, as far as not wanting to increase tensions between agricultural uses, which, you know, modern-day farming is something of industrial use, with large equipment, late hours, noise, dust. And, you know, currently, you know, there are, you know, obviously, you know, areas where residential is abutting, you know, agricultural uses, but it seems like it's one more step further to formalize that. You know, and there is a specific clause within the zoning code that does allow ag to remain as a legal nonconforming use in areas, you know, kind of an ag protection clause, you know, a right to farm in a way. But, you know, I think the reason why I do support recommending this, support, I should clarify, it's a planning commission, in this case, offers a recommendation, you know, the city council making the final decision on interim use permits as well as zoning text amendments. And, but the reason I can recommend it is that, you know, when I see it as an isolated, isolated parcel behind Menards, kind of buffered by wetlands around it, and not having that, any sort of tension between neighbors and agricultural use.
Yeah, I understand that. But I, but, so doing this zoning text amendment, you don't feel like that is going to, the global, you know, looking at it community-wise, that that's going to, we, are there enough of these kinds of, of this set of circumstances to warrant that versus not doing that on this other type of zoning? That must be your thinking.
Yeah, I mean, it's, and obviously, it's, an interim use permit is required for any, you know, if it, if another application came forward within the MXR1 zone. And, you know, council would be free to, you know, decide one way or the other with that one. I just, I see it as something of invitation, and, you know, I guess I'm cautious on that one.
Excuse me, sir. Can I still, I know the hearing is over, can I comment on this at all, or is that right? Is the commission okay with?
Yeah.
Yeah, just, when I asked for that piece, it was more just because part of the land that we have been farming is in that area. I mean, we haven't, we don't, I didn't intend to go right up to those, the homeowner's properties. I just wanted to, if you look at the, one of the aerial photos, if you could show you that, you'll see that I actually have farmed in that area, and I just want to keep doing the area. I didn't want to, I wasn't asking to go all the way to the house, it's a PID, so, I mean, I could have drawn some line on the paper and said, here's where I want to keep farming. So if that makes sense. So I would like to farm that whole thing and keep that down, but I didn't want to go up to the housing, and I never planned that, because I know that would cause controversy with the people in, I think it's evergreen estates or something evergreen. That's all I had for comment.
Okay, so it's that northwest corner of that?
Yeah, those two little thumbs coming down.
Yeah.
Which is quite a ways from the existing homes. There's trees in between there, and I don't plan on going any farther than that, because you can't, there are little islands out there of uplands anyways, it's not where, you'd have to drive through a wetland to get to them, so I just want to do the continuation, where it's contiguous. So that's what I'm asking for, but.
Thank you.
So is it possible to craft something that allows that? Or are we just, is it, does it open a can of worms that is a global problem for you here, or a community-wide problem?
Well, I mean, putting in the MXR1 zoning district puts it in that area that's, you know, a few thousand acres. It's, I mean, you know, and, you know, I understand Mr. Smith's point here, you know, because, you know, that's the reason I brought this up. I mean, there's a great wetland buffer between the high ground and the homes on Elston here. But that's not going to be in every case.
Hey, Donovan, how many feet away is the current farming spot to the nearest, or approximately the nearest home there?
You can go, say, like here to, that's to the house, maybe 670 feet.
So if we put a condition in there, allowing that parcel to be included and said something, that one looks a little closer, if we said something like, no closer than 550 feet to the nearest developed parcel, would that satisfy your desire to have the nearest developed parcel, would that satisfy your desire to have the global issue across the city, setting a precedence where we're allowing it here where I think several of us or all of us may believe this seems reasonable to farm that?
Do you think that, you mean to actually amend the zoning text amendment so that it's interim use not, you know, no closer than 500 feet from a, say, single-family residential use? Well, just from residential use?
I don't know that I'd want to put a footage in the zoning code, but I would not be, I wouldn't object to having it as a condition, like.
The interim use permit?
Yes, on the interim use permit, so that it set the precedence that said, here's why we're allowing this here, so that you don't have, you know, a neighborhood and then all of a sudden farming going right up to the backyard and causing the issues you mentioned earlier, which it doesn't appear that, I've never heard an issue of farming on this particular parcel annoying neighbors, and certainly no one spoke at the public hearing about that concern.
Just let him put a rooster there.
What was that?
Just let him put a rooster there, and then we'll hear. Sorry.
Not funny.
It does say crop zone, like, I don't think roosters are crops.
There's an issue with the definition.
Donovan, the tan area, this, this triangle piece that we're talking about, is that the MXR3 or the MXR1?
That is MXR1. Here, here's that line that distinguishes between MXR3 to the north.
Okay.
And then MXR1 here.
Okay.
You know, I can just pop that in. Let me see.
Mr. Chairman, you know, I understand this, the desire on the part of the city attorney to kind of tighten things up, and I, you know, ultimately, that probably makes our job easier. Although I'm not 100% convinced of that because of the number of variance, you know, because of the number of actions that we have to take that are variances. But that's a discussion for another time. I, you know, I don't have any objection to him farming the tillable part of this property here, and it just seems like if we've got, you know, if each one of them, if you, if you have an interim use permit for every single one of these that comes in, you can, you know, you can yea or nay it. You know, I realize there's something to be said for precedent and.
Thank you.
And, and all of that, but it just seems, it just seems reasonable to me here to allow, you know, farming of that, because it's, even that little thumb that sticks in close there is still four or 500 feet from the property line of the, of the nearest houses. And it looks like there's, there's a good stand of trees between that and, and the houses as well. But, you know.
Well, I mean, I do see a middle, middle way here, you know, if add a condition that relates to, you know, some, you know, buffer for this interim use permit, but then actually the recommendation then for the, for the zoning text amendment doesn't include the MXR1.
Yeah. I mean, that seems like that, I didn't state that quite that eloquently, but I, that's kind of what, I mean, I think we have the protection that we need with the interim use process. And I know it's going to, it's going to come back to, you know, precedent. I, I know that, but, I mean, what are there? A dozen potential, you know, at this point in time in history, are there a dozen potential pieces of property where this could potentially be an issue if somebody else wanted to make it an issue? And what magnitude-wise, what are we, what are we, what are we talking about here? What's the potential problem? And I don't want to drag this thing out unnecessarily, but I'm just, I'm just wondering if there's that many real situations, and I didn't research it. I didn't try to.
Yeah.
Figure out if, what, what the magnitude of the potential precedent problem could be.
Right, right. I mean, I agree with you, though. I think there's a limited universe of potential properties. I just, I guess I'm cautious with zoning text amendments for those unintended consequences.
Yep.
In many cases, I mean, it wouldn't be the current agricultural user who would apply for these, because they already have the protection as a non-conforming use. And they may not want to have, go into this potential interim use permit where council could potentially restrict, you know, agricultural uses like it is, like it's done here. But.
We could probably spend another half hour talking about that, why this particular piece of property, you know, why there is the interim use here and, and something that's not grandfathered in, because it's always been there.
Yeah, I can.
There before the zoning came.
Well, yeah, I just, my, my, just looking at the, the record from the 2012 IUP process, you know, it appears that that time the city determined that ag use had not been established. But, but I also see that at that time, Mr. Smith was also saying that there was, you know, historical agriculture use. So we're still at that point, I think.
Other discussion or a motion?
I'd, I'd be willing to make a motion, I'm going to make a motion here that we recommend to the city council, you know, approval of this request, including the non-wetland tillable portion of that, which zoning is that?
MXR1.
The MXR1 parcel here.
There's a motion. Is there a second? I'll second the motion for discussion. I have one question for the maker of the motion. Does the motion include, or is your intent to include all of the eight staff recommendations as written?
Which is nine, there's a misnumbering.
I'm sorry.
Oh, there's two twos, the nine staff recommendations.
I'm making the motion there, and I understand. So there was six, okay, here we go. Well, I see there's a, there, there's a, there, this one, number six, the upland areas may be cleared and grubbed except for the 25-foot natural buffer areas required to be maintained or outlanded to prepare the ground for.
That, that makes sense.
Okay. No, I meant, it makes sense, but that, I just want to make sure that that was limiting enough for us, and I guess that it probably would be, because the wetlands aren't going to go away. They're all, you know, they're, so yes.
And they said they were taking care of those now.
Yeah. So I would, including these eight conditions, and so do I need to make what I said a ninth condition of this?
It's your, it's your motion. You can certainly change it if you wish, or I can, I can withdraw and you can rewrite it another way, or we can accept somebody else's. I'm open to anything.
Well, let's go, let's go with a motion that includes this parcel of land here. And if it needs to, if we need, when we do it for the record, if we need to make that into a condition, that's, we'll do that.
And so it should be, for greater clarity, for that southernmost parcel, PID 0703221230005.
That is MXR1 zoned.
Yes.
And that was the part that, that I'm uncomfortable with on the motion, is that we're not clear that we're including that portion of the MXR1 mixed residential district.
But I want it to be clear.
Right.
That we are including.
So it's, the PID is listed.
I'm trying to be difficult, I just.
Yeah, if you look up there and it finds a fact, it lists that actual PID, you can include that.
Okay, so let's do that. So you didn't, it's not in the recommendation, it's up here.
Yeah, because I listed, again, individually, just to be clear, so.
Yes, okay.
The motion could include that PID as well.
So that is, that's the PID 070322123005, is that the one? Okay, so that's, that's in the mo, that's in the motion. That's added, I mean, it's added to the recommendation here. I'm, I'm just butchering, it's terribly, I feel bad, I should have written it down.
Do you want me to read it?
I'll withdraw my motion, so we can have greater clarity.
Okay.
Is there other discussion or another motion? Commissioner Young?
Okay. I move approval of an interim, interim use permit for the owner Mark Smith to conduct agricultural activities on the property zoned B2 highway business, MXR1, that's a mixed residential district, correct?
Single and townhouse residential district.
And MXR3 mixed residential district with the PIDs 07.032.21.21.0020, 07.032.21.23.0004, 07.032.21.22.0002, 06.032.21.34.0086, 06.032.21.34.0083, 06.032.21.34.0053, 06.032.21.33.0004, and 07.032.21.23.005, subject to the eight staff recommendations. Nine staff recommendations. Oh, I apologize. Thank you.
Did you get it, Karen?
There's a motion.
Absolutely. Do you want me to read it back?
I'll second that motion.
I'm not even kidding. I'll read it back.
There's a motion and a second. That's, was somebody asking to have it read back?
No. Do you want me to read it back to you?
I don't, I actually, I caught her.
Don't you dare.
Is there discussion on that?
Mr. Chair, we had talked a little bit about the distances from the homes with part of this approval of this mixed-use interim use permit of around 550 feet. Did we want to have any further discussion on that, or do we feel a buffer would be, the natural buffer would be enough here to the motioner?
Where is nine?
There's two twos. It was misnumbered.
Thank you.
There it is, just like that.
Mr. Young, do you want to?
Mr. Chairman, in regard to that particular issue, I, I'm, I'm trying to understand what we would gain by that, because I don't think that the, I think in this particular case, you've got the wetland buffer that's going to be there come rain or come shine, and it's not going to change. So I don't know, I mean, this interim, am I understanding this correctly, that this would be an interim use permit for just this piece of property? I mean, I suppose.
This permit is for this piece of property.
The entire piece as it stands.
So do we need, you know, I don't know, maybe we, do we need to describe that, that portion of the land?
I think the discussion was if somebody else came forward in the future that maybe had a piece that was zoned MXR1, if we don't have some sort of conditions on it and we don't have a limitation, they could build right up to potentially residential houses.
But they would still have to get the.
They would have to have an individual conditional use permit, which we can set conditions on, just as we're setting conditions this evening. We had talked about having what would be a tenth condition, that, that cropping not occur closer than 500 feet to the homes. And if, if, if that is something, I would consider an amendment to my motion. If that is something that, that the commissioners are interested in.
I'm personally okay with it either way. I think that we've made it clear in the record that the distance from these homes is one reason that we're open in considering this piece. I think the, the heavy wetlands and woodlands that will mitigate noise issues and all of those types of pieces makes this uniquely acceptable. And I think that, you know, the setting the precedents, whether it's in a motion or the record, to me, I'm okay with it either way. But if commissioners have a preference one way or another, I'm completely fine with it either direction we're going here.
Mr. Hart, do you have a preference one way or the other?
I like the simplicity of retaining the, the wetland buffers. In this case, it really is, you know, that these are conditions applied to this, this property, and, you know.
Extensive wetland there that will require pretty much that 500 foot.
Okay, I just, discussion.
I'm guessing that thumb and that whole area there is not even usable because of buffers.
Did that get a second?
It did.
Yes, I did.
Is there other discussion?
Thank you.
All right, there is a, there is a motion for approval with nine staff conditions on a long list of property numbers. All those in favor, sign it by a, saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. No? Motion carries.
Did we have a second?
There was this.
It was you, okay. Thank you.
And we'll move on to the zoning text amendment, including agricultural activities as an interim use in the B2 highway business and MXR3 mixed residential zoning districts. Will have staff present?
Yes.
Is there an applicant on this, too?
This is staff-sponsored, as part of the, the zoning code cleanup.
And then we'll hold a public hearing and then we'll bring it back to the commission. Donovan?
Okay, I'm going to pull the text up. So, you know, this basically, you know, would codify within the zoning code that within the MXR3 zoning district, you know, agricultural uses would be listed as interim use. And then for the highway B2 district, that agriculture uses would be allowed as interim use within that commercial zoning district. And this is with, again, this is where the, the planning commission makes a recommendation and city council makes the final decision. And so this is, you know, what we discussed earlier, and this is the staff recommendation to modify it like this, just with these two zoning districts, you know, modified.
Are there questions from commissioners? Commissioner Young?
Okay. So to be clean, as you wish, we're going to have to add 153.320, mixed residential single-family and townhouse MXR1 district to this ordinance. And we're going to have to add Section F, which currently has uses, interim uses as towers, uses as determined by the planning commission, and topsoil removal. I think that that is what I am looking at here.
Yep.
And so, in, in order to, to make this clean, we are going to have to amend the draft ordinance, changing Section 3, the effective date, to Section 4, and adding a Section 2, which I can probably do, because it would follow the same outline and text as, as the sections 150. because it would follow the same outline and text as the sections 153.322 and 153.328. However, since this is a proposed ordinance that the planning commission is looking at, does this need to be published as an ordinance entire before we are allowed to vote on it?
Can you answer that one, Karen?
I think when we are publishing ordinances, usually it's a resolution summary of the ordinance that gets published, otherwise it gets way too long.
But I'm adding a significant section and what could be considered a significant change to this draft ordinance by adding an entire zoning district.
So my guess is Bridget, city attorney, would say that that piece of it could be added to the summary ordinance, so the summary resolution that would be published as changes to the ordinance.
And we haven't published anything yet and there is time, because it wouldn't be, you know, there is a city council meeting next week, but, you know, this is something I want to delay until the February 10th meeting to discuss.
Okay. Yeah, I'm ready.
Do you have other questions?
I don't have any other questions.
I have one of staff. So the bottom line on each of section one and section two says uses as determined by the planning commission and city council. And I'm not entirely comfortable with that language because it implies that you have to have something approved by both bodies.
Mm-hmm.
So it just be and/or, or?
Well, the planning commission It doesn't say like approved, it says determined, I mean, you know, so it's, I mean, I want to think that language is intentional, that they're not saying approved, because sometimes there is, you know, planning commission recommendation denial and then council approval.
In other words, just as the interim use permit is, we make a recommendation and it's approved by the council, then those uses would be recommended by the planning commission and approved by the council. It would be, it's congruent to the process that we're going through right now for this particular piece of property.
Mr. Chairman, I mean, I understand your point here, though, if, well, okay, it just says uses as determined by the planning commission, but it does, theoretically, the planning commission, something could be presented to the planning commission, could be turned down and would still go to the, it would still go to the city council and they could approve it.
Well, I also think this is a vestige of that earlier era where they did, were a little more loosey-goosey and just kind of, you know, by parcel by parcel, said, okay, that's the use. I mean, we processed the Knife River, you know, cement batch plan expansion as a CUP. Well, you know, you know, you call it manufacturing, but, or like, you know, it's not, that use isn't really listed in the zoning code, you know, under conditional uses for that, that B3 district, you know. So, but then they needed this other section, but that's, to me, that seems like more a wholesale, when we get to the conference of rezoning, maybe we'll excise these kind of more loosey-goosey, you know, more flexible statements for the more defined listing of the uses as we're doing now.
And I don't mean for it to take away from the bigger picture discussion on this item. I understand the intent of staff, I agree with the intent of staff on that piece in there. Perhaps we should have the attorney look at it before council is finally presented with it, so that language is written as best legally possible.
Yeah, I mean, the city attorney did review this draft.
Yep.
Okay.
Another discussion? We have a public hearing on this as well. So we'll open up the public hearing, so if anyone wishes to speak on this issue from the public, we're gonna ask you to come up to the podium. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Bring it back to the commission for a motion of recommendation to council. Commissioner Young?
Okay. I am basing my motion on the draft ordinance that is presented to us, an ordinance amending title 15, chapter 153, it will be sections 153.22, 153.32, 153.322, 153.320, and 153.328, related to interim uses in the mixed residential MXR3 district, the mixed residential, single-family and townhouse MXR1 district, and the highway business B2 district. Section one of the draft stands as written, section two of the draft stands as written, section three would become title 15, chapter 153, section 153.320 amendment. The provisions of title 15, chapter 153, section 153.320, including subdivision F of the Forest Lake City Code are hereby amended as followed, with the underlying text being the additions and struck out text deleted. And the section, the new section three F would be interim uses, subject to applicable provisions of this chapter, the following interim uses in the MXR1 district, PRN requires an interim use permit based upon procedures set forth and regulated by section 153.035 and PRN. Place of, one would be towers, that is in the existing code, two would be uses as determined by the planning commission, that is in the existing code, three would be topsoil as is in the existing code, four would be agricultural uses, that would be underlined as new language, five now would be uses as determined by the planning commission and city council as existing language. Previous drafted section three becomes section four with the effective date as is and the final sentence as is.
There's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
There's a motion and a second, is there discussion?
Mr. Commissioner, Donovan, are we looking at that text code right here, 153.320?
Yes, yeah. This is the current MXR1 zoning district standards.
I saw a lot of
320.
Could you slowly scroll through that again?
And sir, what I'm doing is they've got the three in there and I'm just trying to keep it kind of
Yep. No, it's a good catch.
Okay.
Is there other discussion? Anyone requesting to have it reread? Do you have all of it, Karen? Perfect.
I got a video I can watch later, so yeah, I got it all.
There's a motion and a second, I don't see any further discussion, so all those in favor, sign them by by saying aye.
Aye.
No, motion carries. Item number eight was removed. We don't have an other business on here. Was that intentional, Donovan?
No, but we already approved the agenda.
So we're at adjournment?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
There's a motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, sign them by by saying aye.
Aye.
No, motion carries, we're adjourned.
Mr. Gerard, was there anything that you wanted to convey to us? We appreciate your wisdom. Yeah, I do.
Now that we're adjourned.
Good evening, commissioners. Now, I have nothing for you today. As you, I believe you all know, Commissioner Black is vacating his position, so I believe that there's no one in the wings as such, so I don't believe at this time the mayor is ready to make a recommendation, excuse me, a recommendation for another commission member. I believe she's gonna, they're gonna open it up, I don't know exactly how wide they're gonna open it up. Other than that, we've just kicked off the year, we've only met twice, once for the first meeting of the year and then a workshop yesterday, so not a lot to cover today. Happy to answer any questions, so.
So, I'm just curious what your thinking is on the timing on the approval of the comp plan. I'm being mean, I know.
Do we adjourn or what?
I'm just asking for an opinion. You don't have to answer that, you don't have to answer.
Because I don't have an answer for you.
I'll talk, I'll talk, I'll talk to sector rep tomorrow morning and she thinks that they just got back the last technical comments, so I want to think this
I was just curious.
It's jumping, making it through the Met Council in the next couple of weeks.
Anything else I cannot answer?
Thank you.